Thank you for being here when um when our colleagues return from the restroom will reconvene for the study session. Thank you.
We'll we'll have some people. Mm hmm. Hello.
Yeah. At the end.
Motion to um open the study session.
Moved.
We have open the session. Study session and uh we have motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimous. Um. Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries unanimous, four oh. Superintendent Jordan.
Thank you, President Norwood.
Scott, were there any comments from the public?
Do we, oh yeah, yes we do.
We have no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, President Norwood. Tonight, we have Travis Kirk of TBK, our bond consultant who assists us in overseeing the bond programs. And he has with them our architect from the LPA firm, which is responsible for the architectural design of the Performing Arts Theater at Milpitas High. And also, just to blink, Swinerton, the construction company working. And tonight, he is going to be talking with us about the overall budget and process and procedures for doing change orders. And in particular, in the case of Open Bid, which is what Milpitas High School Theater was. And CBO Rikunase, do you want to introduce everybody?
Kick us off.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. I would like to kick it off by having our panel introduce themselves before we start with a presentation.
Good evening, Board President Norwood, members of the board and cabinet. My name is Travis Kirk, TBK Construction Management.
Good evening. My name is Angie Wu with Swinerton Builders as our president manager.
And I'm Maria Madrigal, project manager for LPA Design Studios.
Very good, okay. So what we're here to do tonight is to go kind of through a study session and see where we got, where we are with change orders and overall costs for this project. And how it evolved over time. So as you know, we hired LPA early on to come in and design plans for not only this performing arts center, but also for a second gym at Milpitas High and a fitness center. They did, they did a good job on that task. They, we had committee meetings and all that, got all the plans drawn, got the plans through DSA. But during that process, the pandemic hit and construction escalation went through the roof. So the cost of construction went up as such that at some point, we just decided with the district's budget to just build the performing arts center, by we, I mean you all. And so I think that the board felt that was the most impactful to the district. I had heard some say that the last bond was heavy on athletics, so this time they wanted to favor the arts. So that's where we were with that. We had originally had a lease leaseback contractor on our pre-construction agreement. And a pre-construction agreement for a lease leaseback contractor is a small fee. They charge you to say, okay, well, we're going to come in during design. We're going to build out a schedule. We're going to tell you value engineering options where you might be able to save money. Say if you use product A over product B or constructibility review, okay, we're going to review it. Hey, we may see some issues with how your steel structure is. Maybe we can change that in the design process rather than on down the road. We had XL Construction on a pre-construction agreement. We received very late in the design phase, an estimate, cost estimate for the three buildings from the architectural team. As I recall, was around fifty-four, fifty-five million for all three buildings. XL, this was pre-pandemic XL, or just sorry, at the beginning, came in about eighty million, couldn't really close that gap. There wasn't enough to value engineer to close that big of a gap. So according to code, we had to go to our second selection lease leaseback contractor, and the second highest score in the process was over a construction. They came in and said they could be a lot closer to that number. So we engaged in a pre-construction agreement with them where they went through the exercise of doing their own estimate and coming back with an actual GMP for just the theater. And that GMP is listed in here tonight, just over fifty million dollars. So at that point, and that, and that GMP did have some contingency allowance built into it, as I'll discuss later, how a lease leaseback works versus the design bid build. So they were a little over fifty million. And so through further discussions with the district, we felt like that number was still high. Because we're kind of coming off the lens of, well, gosh, three years ago, we were doing the whole thing for fifty-four. Why would we pay fifty for one building? Why don't we low bid it? And so, so the decision was made, yeah, let's put this thing on the open market. Let's get qualified bidders. Let's do a lot of outreach, which we did. And we got four competitive bids. And the low bidder was Swinerton at forty-two million, three hundred forty-four thousand. The second bidder was forty-three million and change. The third bidder was forty-four million and change. The fourth bidder was forty-six million and change. They were missing some documents, so they were deemed non-responsive. They weren't the low bidder anyway, so no harm, no foul there. So when we went to low bid, it's a, it's a different system as far as allowances and contingencies are going to go. And so that's, that's where I'll start tonight with this first slide, the designed bid build low bid. So for a design bid build, you design a set of plans, you put it on the market and bid it, and then you build it, right? So it's a low bidder. And so when you do that, you're, you're probably going to get the most competitive price always over a lease leaseback. A lease leaseback has some fluff in it because they know they're going to deliver a great project on time. They're going to eat some stuff along the way. And they're, they're going to also have that time in pre-construction to build out a schedule, right? And so with design bid build, you have your price, but you have to keep some sort of set aside for change orders. Change orders happen. We've talked about that. Change orders happen for four reasons. Unforeseen conditions. You're digging and you hit a water or gas line you didn't know was underground. Nobody identified. That's an unforeseen condition. Errors and omissions of an architect. No perfect set of plans. There's going to be something missing. So that's, that's usually your biggest pool of change orders is the errors and omissions. And some will say, oh, well, yes, there was an error or omission. There was an omission of some product. Then there's a change order for that, and they, they deem that as a value added, right? So you've added value. So had it been in the bid, they would say, well, your, your base price would have been higher. I think change orders come in generally higher cost than a base bid would be because they have a real sharp pencil at that point.
Did you say that one part? You said error and omissions. If there's an error or an omission by the architect.
Right.
I guess it's the language, right? Error and omission is a language. I mean, like, there was a mistake.
Right.
Made.
Right.
And then when the mistake is corrected, that's, that's deemed to mean that there's now added value to the project because of the error.
Well, I could kind of expand on that. So say, say your intent was to have built-in cafeteria tables all along this wall. And you, and you put the plans out to bid and they weren't there. They, they, they weren't there. And then so somewhere early on in the process, there's two scenarios. Earlier on in the process, someone says, I thought you wanted tables in those walls. You say, yeah, we do. You go back to the architect and say, and they go, yeah, we missed that. Let's add these tables in. Then the contractor, they had no idea the tables were there when they bid it, right? They bid what was in the plans. They say, okay, we're going to give you these tables and it's going to be twenty-five thousand dollars. But you say, that's the value added is that twenty-five thousand dollars. That is to say, if it was in the plans, it may have cost you similar amount of money at bid time. Since it wasn't in the plans, they didn't bid on it. You didn't have that cost. So down the road, when they get added in, that's a value added omission from the plans, if that makes sense.
Yep, it does.
So then there are cases, though, where I've had projects where an architect makes an error. And as a result of that error, you have to deconstruct something. You have, you say, okay, well, the wall was already built. It's already got drywall on it. It's already got panels on it. And now we have to deconstruct that to put in these tables. That's the time we usually push back on the architect for the cost to deconstruct, right? We don't push back on the cost to go forward because it's value added. It's not value added to remodel a brand new building. And so there's, there are two scenarios, and there's one at which you do go back to the architect. And that's anytime you have to deconstruct a brand new thing to do whatever the omission was. Then on lease leaseback, the advantage to lease leaseback, lease leaseback is more expensive. But the advantage is you bring your contractor in early. They're looking at the plans early. They're looking at the plans during the design phase. And they're also building out a schedule, which is very important, right? So when you do a low bid, and it's forty-two million dollar job, you say, congratulations, you're a low bidder. We need a schedule in two weeks. And so, so then Angie and her team have to scramble to get a schedule and say, yeah, we think we can do it in X amount of time that you've allotted, and here's how we intend to do that. With the lease leaseback, there's a lot of time. There's months and months to build out this schedule, so you're a little more dialed in on that. But the primary difference in this project delivery method over the low bid is that your allowances and contingencies are built into the lease leaseback agreement. So you have a pre-construction agreement, which we've done here. And then when you get your guaranteed maximum price, that is to say, your contractor went out. They got two or three, four or five bids on every scope of work, and they've compiled that into their guaranteed maximum price. They add all that. They add their fee. They add their general conditions, which are, general conditions are, what does it cost to have staff on site managing the trailer? The trailer, toilets, IOR trailer, all those things are general conditions, right? But that's built in. And then you have allowances. So some allowances you might see would be DSA back check. So if they bid it before you had the full set of plans, they would have a hundred thousand dollars in there for DSA comments. So DSA may come back and say, oh, well, we like it, but we need you to put an ADA ramp over here by the Kinder Building. And so you have an allowance for things like that. You have, yes.
Do they have anything to add to what you're saying?
Pretty good. Okay. Now I can, maybe I'll run through this and then pass it down for questions. Does that work?
Because, right, because we, we know you.
Okay, well, let me just abbreviate this. So next slide. So the next slide is change order percentage on recently completed projects. These are lease leasebacks. And you all don't see the change orders on lease leaseback because you pre-awarded the change orders when you entered into the guaranteed maximum price agreement. So you're pre-approved all of these change orders. Some of these are Fremont High School projects. But you can see on a sixteen million dollar M and O building, Fremont District Office, Fremont Union, eight point two percent in change orders. And then it goes down. Randall World Language School, this school had seven point eight four percent in change orders. I would note, this is a much easier structure than a fifty-four foot high theater, fourteen feet in the ground. An AC Cupertino, Monovista High, Monovista High, different projects there, ranging anywhere from seven point eight to ten six. Those are real world change orders. And next slide, this is how we set up allowances and contingencies. And these are the percentages on active projects we have going right now. And so you can see anywhere from the Limbrook High Voyager Building, we're just finishing at seven point two eight percent, all the way up to the small gym at Fremont High at fifteen percent. And you see that fifteen percent, it's an old, old gym that we're changing to a wrestling room because we're building a new field house and we knocked down this old building. And so that's a little higher because it's a small project that has a lot of potential to have dry rotted plywood and members and things like that. So that gives you an idea of a typical allowance and contingency. And then the next page, I just threw this on here to kind of point out where we, we were really fortunate. In 2022 is when we had the lease leaseback proposal from Overa. The guaranteed maximum price was a little over fifty million. From August twenty-two to August twenty-three, the construction cost index, this is provided by the Department of General Services, which is affiliated with DSA. The escalation was nine point three percent. But if you go, and then we low bid, and we ended up with a lower number a year later, which is fantastic, right? So the Overa GMP with two million, three hundred thousand dollars in contingencies was fifty million, five forty-eight. And then if you add the escalation, which I'm not tending to do, you'd be at fifty-five million, two forty-nine, right? Swinerton bid, forty-two million, three forty-four. Current change orders to date, two million, six hundred eighty-four thousand, including what you have tonight.
Oh, there, there we go.
Okay, including what you have tonight, it would be two million, six hundred eighty-four thousand.
Do us a favor when you want, because you were talking for like five minutes and we were trying to figure out what we were looking at.
Okay.
Slide hadn't changed. So we can make sure that we can coordinate that as well.
Absolutely.
But now you're talking about the LLB GMP.
Okay.
Lease leaseback.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
The lease leaseback guaranteed maximum price in August of 2022 from Overa Construction was, was fifty million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand. That cost did include some contingencies and allowance, two point three zero nine, which was a much lower than the industry average because I think they were really trying hard to get the job. Then a year later, we low bid it. So if you, that number you see on the upper right is if you would have sat on that GMP for a year with nine point three escalation, you'd be at fifty-five, two forty-nine. But I'm, I'm kind of just throwing that out. I threw that in for information. Then we low bid a year later with nine point three escalation, and the cost was forty-two million, three forty-four. But we had no allowances or contingencies built in. The district did set aside an arbitrary number of two million dollars, just like a put it in this pot of money, don't touch it, which we have exceeded. So the current change orders on the pack are two million, six hundred eighty-four thousand. And that includes the ones that are on your agenda tonight. So the amount that we're over the Overa contingency, which was insufficient, is three hundred and seventy-four thousand. So where we are as far as how far ahead are you from low bidding this versus accepting the Overa GMP not, not counting the escalation? Because we would have started a year earlier, is just shy of six million dollars. And then I'll hand it down to Angie and Maria if you have any questions.
I guess one thing to add for the difference between lease leaseback and hard bid. Is lease leaseback, you're bringing a team earlier on able to provide that pre-construction service where you're able to review the document earlier on by developing the stage, able to really capture some of the, you know, the coordination, the constructability reviews. And then also, you know, even the design was not a hundred percent complete, will be including a lot of the qualification within the lease leaseback. So in that way, you're capturing some anticipated, some costs, either through the unforeseen or conflicts. But as a hard bid, it's a hard bid. We could, as a general contractor, we, we have, you know, in order for us to be or NEGC to be competitive, they will be collecting the low bid numbers from the subcontractors or suppliers or vendors. And then they will be bidding based on what is shown on the document. And I think that's maybe the, the difficult kind of, you know, understanding the hard bid number versus the, the lease leaseback.
So are there any, once a bid is, once a low bid is accepted, are there any ways that you are aware of that could help with determining potential unforeseen costs once you gain a contract?
It's difficult because in a public contracts, if you, if you proceed with this a hard bid, then you're, you're publicizing that you're receiving the competitive number. Once the subcontractor submits the compared number, if they deem low bid number, and then we feel, well, you're not qualified or feel like you didn't, the number doesn't, you know, it's complete, so we go to second low bidder, then you're going to be faced with the lowest bidder bit protesting. So if you're going down the path for a hard bid, it would be difficult to select bids based on the price we receive, other than you're going to have, you know, you'd be selecting the, the lowest bid.
So could you tell me about what BIM modeling is?
BIM modeling? That's the, the, the models that, you know, we, we create the models within the buildings to, to detect any kind of conflicts that through the, like the overheads, we got electrical, mechanical, fire sprinkler, all going on the overhead. Where we model them in that way, before building, we're able to coordinate to they're not conflict or clashing each other.
Is that something that you build into your, into your low bid that you prefer with low bid to also do the BIM modeling or no?
But it was, addendum was issued that BIM modeling was not required. So that cost was not included in the, in the document.
Okay.
So it was, if it was, if it was noted to be included in the bid document, then every bidder subcontractor, you know, they would include the cost in, and it wouldn't be in a change order. But addendum was issued excluding that BIM modeling was not required on this project.
We do BIM modeling.
And with BIM modeling too, it's one of the methods to coordinate. Obviously, if there is less complex projects, it may not be required. So when we essentially clarified that, it, it was an option, right? The contractor could coordinate in other ways. In terms of the architecture team, we do do BIM coordination during design. However, it's a lower level of detail. So when we design, we're contracted to a certain level of detail. As an example, for a duct, we typically don't model like flanges and things that may protrude from the duct. So when the contractor actually produces shop drawings, they have just a lot more information and level of detail where that clash detection is actually more beneficial to the project at that point. Because there's just a lot more level of detail, and the shop drawings are accurate. Typically, you know, mechanical, electrical plumbing drawings. Typically, you know, mechanical, electrical plumbing drawings um are not exact, they're typically diagram, diagrammatic.
Let, let me ask this question. Given where you are with your change orders, now that you have the understanding, would have been modeling been uh, a good idea, given, I mean, I know you made a choice or someone made a choice.
Yeah, and, and, and the board, you know, we presented to the board and went back and did do some BIM modeling on this uh after they were under contract. That was a, an ad that you, you all uh gave two hundred thousand dollars to do after the fact. It was, it was removed during the time when we were trying to get this price down to a reasonable.
I see.
Like something you guys could swallow, go, yeah, let's move forward with this project. And so that was a, a cost savings measure at the time. And I think it ended up being, truth be told, I think it would have been a lot more than two hundred thousand because I think Angie and them started at about four or five hundred thousand. And I said, hey, they're not gonna buy that. What can we do here where we both win? Where you win because you're not scrambling to get conduit around ducks, but the, but the board gets a win too. And so I think you got the BIM modeling for lower than you would have in the base bid.
Yes.
So there was BIM modeling.
They did do some BIM modeling, so that was something uh right after start of construction. Um, Swinerton was pressing really hard. They felt like it would be really to everyone's advantage as far as driving schedule. You know, uh, doing clash detection on a computer is a lot easier than doing it at fifty-four feet in the air on a, on a scaffold. And so they felt like that was reasonable and they were willing to compromise about half of the cost to the district. So the decision to pull it out through an addendum and not include it in the original bid kind of paid off for us because they did it at a fifty percent discount, so.
So there was some BIM modeling, but there was not BIM modeling in all areas. Where, and where there was BIM modeling, there was be able to maximize the savings, but where there wasn't is some of the things that we're dealing with now in the change orders.
No, I thi, I think, and you asked a really good question. We talked about BIM modeling. You said, isn't this going to trigger more change orders? And, and it does trigger change orders in the sense that you realize there's a clash. And you say, okay, well, now we have to reroute this, but you're rerouting it on paper now. You may have forty extra feet of conduit, but you didn't pull out forty feet of conduit to redo it. Like remember that in the tour down that center corridor where all the tiles were out, you could, in the building, be in the coral band and orchestra area. Up above that ceiling tile, you could see how tightly packed the HVAC ducts were, the fire sprinkler systems, the electrical system. You even had a tray for all your data and low voltage cables, all crammed into that little space. And that's, that's the most impactful, in my opinion, place where BIM modeling helped on this job. I think it helped immensely because they were seeing clashes and then they could reach out with a request for information to the design team and say, hey, what should we do in this instance? Because we see a clash on paper. And they could change it before it was constructed and then we didn't have to reconstruct stuff. So ultimately it saved money.
Minimal change orders um raised from the BIM modeling. And I think there is a, you know, like extensive value added. If it wasn't for BIM modeling, I think there would have been a lot more either rework or uh added work, but we were able to get ahead of it, able to make changes without cost impact. So like clash related, I feel like there was a very minimal change orders that was driven from BIM. I think it, it created a lot more early coordination. That was, that was the value that was really added to the project. Yes, uh-huh, prevented the change order that you probably, you know, didn't, you know, have to see and approve.
Sure. So, but then the reverse question also would apply, right? Of the change orders that you are seeing, um, and are those change orders, would those change orders been caught if we did more BIM modeling?
That is particularly.
Okay, um, I don't think so. I mean, some of the change orders tonight are, you know, water pressure at the
Right, because there's value, clearly there's value in BIM modeling, just wanted to make sure. You know, did we do the right balance in on the model and, and that's fair. Okay.
And I would also note that when there's a potential for a change order, that Swinerton's done a good job with doing their due diligence, saying, dear Travis, this may, this answer, so, so they, they see something, they put an RFI in, a request for information. And then they get an answer back and then they start a PCI, potential change order, right? Potential cost increase, different things you can call it, right? So they give me a PCI and they say, this answer may trigger additional cost, right? So every time they do that, all three of these teams get to looking at it. Early on, it's like, let's, let's solve these problems way ahead of time. Let's see if there's a, a better way to do this or an alternative. So that's why I have this strict rule about, nobody does anything without prior written approval because a change order needs to be vetted out. Need to accept it, reject it or modify it. Excuse me. In this case, we have received four hundred and thirty-five potential change orders. A hundred and sixty-six of those four hundred and thirty-five have turned into an actual change order. Many of those were reduced in cost by pushback maybe from TBK to say, I think the pricing is too high. I think we're not getting a credit where a credit is due, where you're, you're not putting on product A, you're putting on product B. Um, and then there's other times where you don't think a subcontractor is giving you a good price. You think they're padding it, so you can, you can put them on time and material. We've done that a number of times. And every time we've done that, the cost has gone down. And so I think we've done a really good job as a team to kind of really try to mitigate the impacts of potential change orders by eliminating the bulk of them. But the ones that are legitimate and fair and warranted, we, we push back where needed.
Thank you.
Any other questions by board members? Any questions from superintendent or executive cabinet? Well, we appreciate the time of you sharing with us the, the process and um the ways that you are working to um ensure that the dollars that we spend um are maximized in terms of this project and being, and being um transparent and sharing that the going with the, the, the low bid versus the original um previous, either was lease lease back, can't quite recall, but knowing where we started at and where you potentially see the ceiling in terms of what could be extraneous costs, but not wanting to get there, right? But you did kind of show, well, this is what it would have been. But as you know, as board members, we're like, well, we want to be where we originally was and, and we want all to automatically be in that number, right? So um, it's, it's important for the board members and potentially the public to understand when, when we see these change orders, where those types of things coming, that if we don't pause and say, hey, what, what's going on, even though it's a different process, every, every opportunity for uh construction is a new opportunity for us to learn and for the community to be educated along the way is out because no one wants to go overbid. But we recognize inflation and all those other things because you had mentioned the cost going up, right? So now when you have inflation of materials going up and you have change orders that are happening simultaneously, um, you know, when you have a cola uh in the state that is extremely low and we, we know that these dollars are only allocated uh for buildings specifically, um, you know, we, we're all in a um, a position to learn to be as effective as possible in this work. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to share this uh information with us, which will allow us to make a decision um on the uh action item that's a little bit later on in the agenda.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Is there a motion to conclude, superintendent? Oh, I said, thank you. Uh, is there a motion to conclude the study session?
Move to close the study session.
Motion to close the study session. Is there a such, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Motion carries, uh, four, zero unanimous. Study session is now concluded. We will begin open session in four minutes. So Scott, if you want to put the four minutes up on the clock, we appreciate that.
Fifty-three seconds. Stretch away. Any, any plans to travel? Is she here or she's?
I want to.
Okay. Oh, it's the kids and the grandparents?
Today's always fun.
Oh. It's the kids, huh? A little break.
Oh, big break. Miss the girls. Oh, boy.
Yeah. It's tough to travel. Can't even do it as a family anymore. It's hard to.
Was that, was that helpful? That, um.
Um, we're gonna play the video.
Yeah. Was that helpful?
So then circle back with an email, whatever it is about that particular thing in terms of this is what we need to see continuing forward. Just as, as we, there, there. You know, they were here the last week.
I didn't see how that works. Good evening, Mel Peters. I'm your twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Board President, Chris Norwood. Welcome to the meeting of the Mel Peters Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance to our education proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for Open Meetings. Tune into our hybrid style meetings online on either Zoom or YouTube or in person inside our boardroom here at the Randall World Languages School. Public comments can be made when you're logged onto Zoom or if you're in person. YouTube, however, is a listen only option. If you're unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. One public, one comment, one public comment per person is allowed for each item. Close session announcements.
Thank you, President Norwood. In closed session, the Board of Trustees approve the superintendent's recommendation to hire a certificated manager for the position of Mel Peters High School Assistant Principal with a four O and one absent vote.
Thank you. Um, motion to review and approve the open session agenda.
Motion.
President, we have a request uh to alter the organization, the order underneath reports for business services.
Okay.
We would like to request uh that uh the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee annual report goes first before the Student Nutrition uh Services Department.
Which number is that? What's that?
That will be nineteen A I and nineteen A I I. We want nineteen A I I to go first.
Motion to move nineteen A I I before nineteen A I. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, seeing none, motion carries. Uh, the agenda item is moved four O unanimous. And we were in the process of reviewing and approving the open session agenda. There are motion.
Make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, seeing none, motion carries. The agenda is adopted. Then could you come to the mic, please? Um, would you like to lead us in the flag salute? All right, okay. Yep.
Oh, good. I see. Are, are we ready? I pledge allegiance
Thank you. Thank you. Item thirteen on our agenda, MUSD strategic goals. The strategic goals were developed by the MUSD Board in what year Superintendent Jordan?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen and, and we'll go starting with trustee no.
Build a culture we that engages parents, staff and community partners in supporting student success.
Trustees Jordan.
Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students and staff.
Develop educational pathway that allows students to apply their passion in learning for future careers.
Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and making social, emotional and academic gains.
Identify student focused strategies that are creative to accommodate enrollment growth and assure that are creative to accommodate enrollment growth and assure healthy learning environments.
Thank you. Item fourteen on our agenda, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. We have several recognitions tonight. If I could have the board and executive cabinet join me, please. Okay. This year across the U.S., including Puerto Rico, as far as Puerto Rico, we had two hundred and twenty-six students nationwide who participated in the National Promising Young Writers Contest. And they have four designations. The top is first class. And the fourth is merit with exceptional and outstanding in between. And every year, our teacher from Rancho Middle School, Ms. Victoria Salas Salcedo has a student that she or students that she encourages to participate. And this year, her student, Ms. Retu Boxkaran entered and was awarded first class designation. So if we could have you all come on up. And mom and dad, too. Me, too. Congratulations. I'm here. And mom and dad. Be next to. Eric Chu, please tell us a little bit about what you wrote.
So the prompt was the competition was to write about home. Now, home isn't just a place. It's also a community, people and the place you're in. The memories you make and the friends you make along the way. I wrote about the many ways home can be represented, not just physically, but also emotionally. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Salcedo, would you like to say something about Retu?
I did not prepare remarks, but Retu is an amazing student. Every teacher, she's every teacher's dream. And I'm just so proud of how much she accomplished this year, and I look forward to seeing everything that she's going to do in high school and beyond.
Thank you. Our Mel Peters Elementary Olympics is a great community builder. It's an opportunity for students and team members from across our ten elementary schools as well as middle and high schools who are there to support them to compete in a way that brings unity to the district and also allows everybody to have a lot of fun. And doing something like that takes resources. So tonight, we would like to recognize the many community organizations that contributed to assuring that we were able to have the Mel Peters Elementary Olympics. So first, I would like to ask our diversified mortgage group to come on up. And can you also pull out Mills Diner? And also Mills Diner. Yes, that's right. I remember that. Thank you, Mr. Kawacho. He will. The new one. And from the Great Mall Simon Group, I would like to ask Lynn and Chance to come on up.
The best story is we actually donated basketballs and soccer balls and for some reason Scott will tell, they all got shipped individually. And so Scott had every day he got another ball, another ball, another ball, another ball. So he was a great sport, too. So thank you.
Yep. And we have from the Peters Community Ed Foundation, Swati Shah and Amin Fazal. From Crucial Painting, we have Keith Konda, who discounted all of our participant and volunteer T-shirts. Did a really good job on them, too. Is he here tonight? Okay, we'll have to send that to him. And we have Rogue Timing with Mark Robinson, who helped to make the event so smooth. We cut off about two and a half hours thanks to his timing and thank you very much for bringing your services along with that. And is he? Okay. And then we have P E L Learning Center of Mel Peters with Oscar. Okay. We'll get that one to him, too. Next, I would like to recognize Dave and Busters. And with Stephanie Morgan and again Great Mall with Lynn and Chance. Together, they hosted the best Earth Day event yet for our second and first grade students. Oh, no, I didn't. We got it. And we have Republic Services with Ms. Jean Serpa, who again this year was one of our big sponsors. Thank you so much. And that is our. Oh, sure.
The Mel Peters Elementary Olympics is a huge community event that brings all thirteen of our elementary schools together, gives students who don't have access to competition or after school sports, ability to experience that here in Mel Peters. And it can't be done without sponsors like yourself. So we really thank you so much for really investing your time and resources to make sure this Mel Peters Elementary Olympics continue.
And can we have all of our sponsors back up as one big group? And that concludes our recognitions for tonight. Next, I would like to introduce to the board and our community our new Assistant Principal of Mel Peters High School, Ms. Donnell Sontag. And Donnell has many years of experience in secondary education. She started as an English high school teacher. She has been a principal at Middle School in Campbell and also a founding principal of a new middle school in San Clara Unified. And she's served in a variety of roles in the district office, too, as liaison with special education. And she's worked to develop equity standards across her districts that she's been involved in. And she, as an experienced leader, is somebody that we're really excited to have on our team overall. And also she now completes the Mel Peters High School Administrative Team. So I'd like to invite you up, Ms. Sontag, to say a few words.
Mike. Button on that.
Yeah, for the viewers.
Thank you. I'm incredibly excited and honored to be joining Mel Peters Unified School District as an Assistant Principal at Mel Peters High School. From the moment that I learned that MUSD had a focus on innovation and student centered practices, I knew that I wanted to be part of this community. I'm particularly inspired by your focus in developing pathways that connect student passions to future careers. As a leader, I am committed to ensuring that every student has access and and, oh, excuse me, access and opportunity to realize their dreams. And I look forward to partnering with students, staff, families and the community. Thank you for welcoming me. I'm very excited to start.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
A tradition we have is we like to have our new people take a picture with all of our governance team and executive cabinet. So.
Great.
Ladies and gentlemen.
And finally, on the superintendent's report, I would like to invite our co-presidents of the Mel Peters Community Education Foundation, Swati Shah and Amin Fazal. They're going to give us a brief overview of how they've supported our learners in MUSD.
While Scott is doing the the slides, I'm just gonna be starting. Yeah. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'm pleased to share the highlights from the Mel Peters Community Education Foundation impact over the past year. And this is a very quick year recap. So first, the program impact, the STEAM showcase, we had over seven fifty participants, forty plus projects. Randall Elementary had the highest turnout this year. And this year, we gave twelve K in grant. Scholarships, we awarded seventeen thousand in total, ten thousand of which came from our endowment firm. We also did MHS PTSA and SNE Scholarship were also hosted. The highlighted programs, MAGIC, Highlighted Exceptional Middle School Talents this year, featuring.
What's MAGIC?
Impressive.
What's MAGIC?
It's basically for the middle school, school age STEM program for the girls. Then we successfully launched this year the Change Your World Conference and inspiring platform for the youth leadership. And this is our first year for that. We had Odyssey of a Mind, where five teams reached the world final with two placing in the top seven. We built a sustainable fundraising model to support the success for all of the organizations. OM was the one. The third, can you go to the third slide, please? Okay, the community involvement, we supported robotics, N G R O T C, M E O and MHS movie. Issue letters for the government grant support and we had a successful annual dinner event. The next one. Okay, looking ahead, we are going to continue to support the major programs like the STEAM showcase, MAGIC, scholarship and Odyssey of a Mind. Some key updates, we'll have our Change Your World Conference in November. The date is still needs to be finalized. We'll have a STEAM showcase April fourth, twenty twenty six and our annual dinner on May first, twenty twenty six. And the last one. The leadership updates, we have two of the members retiring this year. We have Jessie and Robert retiring. And we have a new board members joining us. It's got Melanie Drunk and she's gonna lead the OM. And that's the impact for the year. Just a lookout. So thank you so much. We'll have a start great New Year next time. Yes.
Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from executive cabinet?
Just want to thank you for, thank you and the team for your commitment to Mel Peters, the students and the community.
Thank you.
Yes, superintendent.
And I appreciate. I appreciate the work as well. And MAGIC, More Active Girls in Computing is something I've had the opportunity to see twice now. I appreciate that it's online so that girls have the opportunity to learn from people across the nation. And I really look forward to seeing how we might be able to expand MAGIC for learners, perhaps at Randall in sixth grade and some of our other schools where kids may not have that access to somebody who knows about computer science.
I mean, this year, we ask the locals if they are into that theme. We will appreciate like the more mentors we have, the more students we can cater.
Yeah, that would be great.
And echoing what the superintendent said, we always appreciate the work for the education foundation in terms of where the STEAM showcase began and now as it continues to expand and support the diverse communities that we serve. And at the same time, my my request would be for future updates. We have a kind of idea of where students are, what schools that students come from. Like I appreciate it in the STEAM showcase, you identified, you know, Randall had the most participants because we recognize that this is an underserved community and their engagement and their wraparound services from them by the community that complements what the school district does is very, very helpful. So just for future reference, to be able to know like where the the foundation is is doing the work in the school district, where the scholarships are going for teacher grants and stuff like that, so that we can see the actual implementation to that and possibly tie it back to some of the reports that the executive cabinet would provide in terms of. in terms of academic performance, English, English proficiency, participation in certain types of activities, because we know it takes a village to make these things happen. And foundations and organizations, which you saw earlier, are a big part of what makes MUSD successful. But if it doesn't reach all of the different types of children that we have, includes, including our students with special needs, right? And that's something that we need to be more mindful of. It's like, how do we start to incorporate students with special needs in some of these activities? Because it'll create a different energy, which Mary Jude, I'm sure, can tell you all about at, at some point, and maybe how to identify some of those students moving forward. So again, we're always honored for the support of the foundation. But as board members, we always want more and more for our kids so that they can be successful in life one day. So thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a wonderful summer.
Thank you. And that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Awesome. And now we are on comments from the public. Scott, do you have any comments from the public?
We don't have any online, and I handed you the one. Yep.
Right, so Katrina Nickerbacher.
So my name is Katrina, and my daughter Kaylee is a student at Randall. She started in 2018 in TK and is about to go to sixth grade in the fall. I was very apprehensive about sending her to Randall because of the low score on the very school, the school websites. But she really wanted to learn Spanish, so I decided to give it a chance. And every day, I'm so thankful, sorry.
It's okay.
I'm so thankful for that decision. I asked her to put down a few words about what this school.
It's okay. It's okay. Yes.
I haven't done public speaking in a few years, so, okay. So I asked her to write down what Randall means to her, and she really struggled. And she firmly wrote that it means everything. Of course, I can't fault her for not writing more because I also struggled with this. I started over multiple times. It's a very short time period to try and get a lot out. And I guess the biggest thing I can say is that in third grade, when she was asked to draw a family tree, she, she put her teachers in her class. The family's teachers and admin here have poured their hearts into our kids. And, but, and what they do with the little resources that we get is huge. And we just plead with you to please continue to put the focus on Randall. The kids deserve it. And the work that our volunteers do, are turn the pennies that we get into miracles for the kids, providing opportunities to them that they would never have if not for the programs like they spoke of giving funds and helping support them. Because a lot of these kids, they don't get the opportunities that so many of us take for granted every day in our own childhoods. And the power I've seen of what, of the change that's happened in the kids' lives because of the teachers and staff and volunteers here is so, so meaningful. So I also do have a few other letters that I brought from other parents and some from the students themselves about what Randall means to them that I wanted to pass on to read later.
Sure, you can give those to Scott, the board communications person, and then he'll, he'll make sure that they're distributed to the board. And as, as, and I can guarantee, as all of these board members will nod with you, we will look at each one of those letters and continue to grow what we, we recognize is a very, very special place.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you're right, public speaking is very, it's not easy to come up there. And we really appreciate you coming and sharing your heart and your experience of your child because that's what makes a difference in us understanding the work that we have to do. And we have to continue to push forward with, because everyone, everyone gets help at some point. And some communities need more assistance than others. And we need to continue to strive to always keep that top of mind, no matter what's happening in the world. So thank you for that. Item seventeen, item sixteen on the agenda, Superintendent's Executive Cabinet reports.
Thank you, President Norwood. I will start with our Assistant Superintendent of Human Relations, Damon James.
Good evening. I, I just want to say, this is our, it's our intense time as we're trying to fill positions for the 2025-26 school year. And our certificated staff still have until June 30th to decide if they want to continue to work with us in 25-26. So our staff is filling vacant positions, posting vacant positions, and interviewing. But we're excited about what's to come in the future. And as far as our continuing staff in Melpitas Unified, we just want to thank you for growing with us as a district. And we look forward to continued change in the future.
That concludes my report from HR.
Thank you. And Executive Director of Inclusive Services for All Learners, Mary Jude, joining us.
Good evening. I would say that we're busy in the hiring process as well in collaboration with the Human Relations Department. We are also busy with our summer school programming and our extended school year programs. They are up and running. We are in week number two. Our preschoolers are all at Sunny Hills this year because we are doing recarpeting and getting a little facelift over at Rose CDC. Our elementary preschool, excuse me, TK through eighth are focused on structured literacy, and they are doing STEAM projects in their learning. And one thing that's really incredible this year is that all students are doing the same lessons, and they are being modified to meet the needs of, of the individual students. So if you are a student who is neurodiverse, a multilingual learner, tweeby, twice, two-way bilingual instruction student, or any other particular needs, you are actively engaged in learning in the same project. And then our secondary is doing a lot with credit recovery this year, as well as our community-based instruction, students going out into the community, learning life skills, job skills, and reinforcing their individualized education plan goals. So it's been a successful launch this year, and we're looking forward to the next coming weeks as we round out our summer school and extended school year for this year. And that concludes the learning and development report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And our Chief Business Officer, Dorothy Riconosek.
So all four high school student interns from Melpitas Youth Force Program officially began their internship yesterday. They will rotate among several key departments, including business services, learning, learning and development with special education and technology services, gaining valuable hands-on experience across our organization. Recently, we learned that California Ed Code 17620 through 176626 pertaining to developer fee has lowered the minimum square footage of any new commercial, industrial, and residential construction or expansion of an existing dwelling from 700 square feet down to 500 square feet per permit application. So when someone's applying for developer fee, they, we will only charge them the fee if they are doing a new construction or expanding off 700 square feet. Now, we can charge them at the minimum of 500 square feet. Tomorrow evening, we will hold our Citizen Ban Oversight Committee, or CBOC, meeting at the Melpitas High School. Following the meeting, TBK Construction Management will lead the committee on a guided walkthrough of the Performing Arts Center construction site, providing them a firsthand look at the progress underway. Looking ahead, on July 22nd, the School Services of California will host a webinar presentation on the governor's enacted budget to offer insights into its implication for education budget across the state. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you. And the work at the Rose Child Development Center that you're referring to is our Early Childhood Education Expansion Grant of 1.2 million. So that's exciting. And then I just would like to share with the board that Principal and Chief Innovator Wolman, along with Assistant Principal Emily De La Rosa at Russell, and Denise Coleman, have all worked together to submit a grant for $1.5 million on building environments for student well-being. And by tomorrow, we will be submitting another grant for $500,000 to the COPS, C-O-P-S, Safety. It's a federal grant so that we can potentially purchase a early alert system for Melpitas High School.
Thank you for those updates. Thank you, Executive Cabinet Superintendent Jordan. For the sake of time, we're going to bypass the by, the board group agreements and go straight to Board Communications. And we will start with trustee No.
Thank you, President Norwood. Attended various graduations and promotions. We heard earlier, as far as from the Randall community, what a special place, and hearing that we're bringing incredible talent to the high school. We still have availability in our district to bring, continue to bring amazing talent, and especially here at Randall with the Assistant Principal opening. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee No. Trustee John.
I want to dittle what my colleague, trustee No indicated. I'm just going to add that I'm hoping everyone gets an awesome summer break. That's all.
Thank you. VP Yiptrun.
Yeah, I enjoyed all the graduations and promotions that our team attended together. I would like to wish everyone a great summer. And thank you to all the staff for making 24-25 a successful year. And I hope everyone will use time to other travel, rest, and rejuvenate. So enjoy your summer. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, VP Yiptrun. Wow, you guys made it so light. It seems like I'm going to be like the, the, the bad cop. But, um, yes, we all appreciate, so I'll, I'll say it this way. I want to thank all the trustees for attending each and every graduation, being there the whole time, and even attending the post-secondary graduation and the other activities. Because I am aware that in other school districts, not every board member attends every graduation. So I really appreciate you guys spending that time, as well as the Executive Cabinet and the time that you were able to spend as well. We do honor graduations and promotions because not every graduation is a promotion. But we, we honor it all in the city of Melpitas and the Melpitas Unified School District. We also had, I attended this past weekend, the Sunny Hills Neighborhood Association put on the Third Annual Melpitas Juneteenth Celebration, which had a lot of local organizations and community, community members participate in just continuing to keep the message of Melpitas being one of the first planned integrated communities, or the first planned integrated community in the United States. That story alive of, and the documentary is on YouTube under the title of 54. And that concludes my report as well. Next item on our agenda, or before I move on to that board communication request, is there any, are there any additions or any communication requests for the superintendent to add to our future agenda? And if we don't have it at this point, at, at your individual, please start that conversation and then bring it to the board, meeting as appropriate. Item 19AII, Accept Parcel Tax Oversight Committee Annual Report.
I would like to call Mr. William Lamb to the podium. Mr. William Lamb is the Parcel Tax Oversight Committee PTOC Chair, reporting on the district's Measure E Parcel Tax Annual Report tonight. Measure E Parcel Tax was renewed in 2023 and will continue through 2031 to support academic programs and retain teachers at the Melpitas Unified School District. The PTOC comprised of volunteer members from across sections of the Melpitas community with Mr. Lamb. As the committee chair, will present its report on the collected tax dollars and how the district spent those funds. Following Mr. Lamb's report tonight, we are requesting the board to accept the Measure E Parcel Tax Annual Report for the 23-24 school year and the estimated budget for the 24-25 school year. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you. William Lamb, current Chair of Parcel Tax Committee Oversight Committee. Melpitas voter approved a five-year parcel tax for the school district Measure B on June 8th, 2010. The measure expired on June 30th, 2015. The parcel tax Measure C was renewed on June 3rd, 2014 for an additional eight years and expire on June 30th, 2023. Voters renewed the district parcel tax Measure E for eight more years on June 7th, 2022. The terms for Measure E began on July 1st, 2023 and will last through June 30th, 2031. The parcel tax provides local school funding that cannot be taken by the state. It helps the district to focus on continue accelerating academic programs in science, technology, engineering arts, athletics, and math. Attract and retain highly qualified teachers and staff. Create stronger academic programs in reading, writing, and computer science while supporting students' health and well-being. Increase educational pathways for career and college readiness. Ensure teachers have the support and tools to prepare students for the future workforce. The parcel tax is intended to help cover expenses that directly promote student learning, such as paying academic programs instructors. The money from the parcel tax is allocated to expenses directly related to teaching. The total parcel tax revenues for the 2024-2025 school year is estimated at $1.54 million. It was proportionally distributed to each elementary, middle, and high school site. The Parcel Tax Oversight Committee consists of six voting community members and seven non-voting district representatives. The committee convened twice in the 2024-2025 academic year to examine and offer suggestions about the parcel tax fund budget. We submit this report as Melpitas residents attesting to the district use of parcel tax revenues in compliance with the ballot measures intentions. This report include the 2024-2025 estimate budget details and the 2023-2024 actual spending. The parcel tax revenues provide vital support for every child in the district. And this additional income will significantly impact on our students' education. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, William. Next item on the agenda for reports, Student Nutrition Services Department Report. Student Nutrition Services Department Report.
Hey, good evening, board members, executive cabinet, and community members. My name is Sandy Huen, the Director of Nutrition Services and Warehouse. Tonight, joined by my team, Fatima Tapi, Field Supervisor, and Scott Snyder, Consulting Chef from Brigade. We will provide an update on our financial health of the child nutrition program, and we like to highlight the steps we've taken this year to enhance the quality of the nutrition program for our students. Next slide, please. So I'll start with an overview of our program. I want to highlight the shift in our operation from pre-pandemic, when meals were served based on eligibility, to our current operation of universal meal, where we are currently serving meals to all students at no cost. These comparisons illustrate the substantial growth we've experienced in recent years. Our annual operating budget has doubled, and we're now serving significantly more breakfast and lunch at every school site across the district. The total meals served have increased from 980,000 meals to 1.3 million annually. This growth have led to an increase in labor hours, not only due to higher participation, but also to support our expanded focus on scratch cooking. This type of work has evolved and required a higher-scale level of our staff. For this reason, we made a deliberate effort to invest in our team's professional development by providing ongoing culinary training. We logged 365 hours this school year alone to help staff build new kitchen skills. Now, this isn't our typical back-to-school training focused on program regulations and compliance, but instead, it's centered on building practical skills that improve techniques and safety around large-scale cooking. And next slide, please. So this graph illustrates the upward trending of our daily participation in breakfast and lunch. And before 2019, our program was operating at a deficit. In response to that, our department implemented cost-saving measures, including strict inventory control and food waste management. Collaboration with schools to maximize meal participation, and most importantly, taking advantage of any and all waivers and grants available at the federal, state, and community level. So since 2019, we have consistently maintained a budget surplus and built a healthy reserve to sustain the program. We do not receive any general fund contribution from the district, so it's very important that we continue to be self-sufficient. In the recent years, CDE also released several grant opportunities to support freshly-prepared initiatives, which our department voluntarily opt-in. We were awarded $1.4 million to fulfill specific requirements and obligations. And through these grants, it enabled us to make great strides towards our goals, which Fatima and Scott will highlight in later slides. Next slide, please. Okay, so we do frequently hear from our stakeholders about the need for better food, and we share, and we want to assure you that the commitment for continuous improvement. Improving food quality involves more than just complying with federal nutrition guidelines. It demands enhancing our operational capabilities and adopting a comprehensive approach. So there are a few areas that we are working on, which is being very selective with what we use in our meals program, increasing in-house meal preparation rather than relying on pre-cooked frozen meals, sourcing organic and California-grown produce, supporting California economy as well as working with socially disadvantaged, small-scale farmers, modernizing our kitchen equipment, making connections with students to ensure the program remains student-focused, and investing in staff to build new skill sets. Next slide, please.
This school year, we made major investments in upgrading our infrastructure. Many of our equipment are over 20 years old and due to be replaced. When replacing our equipment, we are intentional to make sure they meet our current operation needs of our growing department. At many of our kitchens, we are at max capacity for our electrical and plumbing system, which is a challenge for adding new equipment. Not only we need equipment compatible with our space, but we make sure the new systems can help us produce and serve meals efficiently. On this slide, we have a picture of Milpitas High School's new commercial dishwasher installed last fall, and a picture of our current summer project at Central Kitchen, which is adding a much-needed permanent outdoor freezer storage and replacing equipment in our large main walk-in cooler and freezer. On the right-hand side, you can see students enjoying fresh, organic produce. This year, we made a commitment to offer more variety of fruit for our students. We received a grant which allowed us to offer seasonal organic California-grown fruit two to three days a week across the districts. Students enjoyed fruit like pomegranates, kiwis, grapes, strawberries, mandarins. We also purchased organic bananas, oranges, and blueberries using our Department of Defense funds. It is such a treat for students. It's been a popular addition and adds more flavor and excitement to school meals. Next year, even though the grant was not extended, SNS is committed to continue to provide seasonal organic fruit for students to enjoy. Next slide, please. Last July, we invited all of our SNST members to the Culinary Institute of America in Napa. We're a hands-on day of training. Under the instruction of chefs, we learned about culinary practices, and our team prepared and enjoyed an elaborate meal from scratch. Being able to see a state of an art kitchen and the types of equipment which makes freshly-prepared meals possible was an eye-opening experience of what we can do here at Milpitas. This was the beginning of our culinary journey. Now I will pass it on to chef Scott, who will go into more detail about our culinary efforts this school year.
Hello, everyone. Like Sandy said, my name's Scott. I am a program chef with Brigade. Those of you who don't know what Brigade is, it's a company that hires professional chefs and places them within schools to help their food service meet their goals, improve training, improve food. We started in Connecticut on the East Coast, and we're currently all over the country in about 50 districts, and we have about 75 chefs on the team. Next slide, please. Cooking with fresh ingredients, a lot of the struggle with school food is to develop flavor. There's so many restrictions on sodium, saturated fat, calories, sugars, all that thing. So ways that we look to do that is with utilizing fresh produce, utilizing a lot of spices, you know, and that's an easy way to really enhance the nutrients in the dishes, especially when we're adding local product and so forth. Next slide, please. Since starting in January with Milpitas, we have offered a variety of culinary trainings. We have since completed two of them. We have another one scheduled for next month, and these trainings have seen 95% participation with the staff here. And that's great. That's fantastic. I think that is really a great indicator that the staff want to learn. They want to continue to grow in their roles, and they're eager to learn more about the culinary aspect of their jobs. Another side, we also have done focus groups. So the focus groups we did in March and April of this year, and we went to four different sites within the district, one here being Randall, and we did taste testing with the students there. The goal of that was to gather feedback from them. At the end of the day, the students are the ones who are eating this food. So it's a critical part in developing the menu and getting feedback so we can better understand what the kids are looking for, what they like, what they don't like. And we're going to continue to do that throughout the three years that I am contracted to be here.
So a quick question for you, chef Scott. What was that like, the student focus group?
It was great. You know, I think kids were excited. They were happy. They had, you know, the sense of like they had the power and they can make the decisions, and like, that's really cool, especially the little ones. You know, I think it's critical, you know, especially in school food, that it doesn't matter if I like it or you like it, and it's about the kids.
Were you there for the taste with the student focus group?
Absolutely, yeah.
So what was a memorable moment for you during that experience?
I think just hearing the kids, you know, interact, and like, they felt like they were on like Top Chef or like they were judging, you know. And it's funny, you know, like, it's great. You know, I think they really enjoyed it, and they were excited for it.
Just a quick follow-up question. So all of these focus groups, can you share like one or two things that you learned about the different communities and what their particular tastes for food are?
Yeah, so I mean, Randall in particular, you know, it's predominantly a Spanish school. So we had a dish that we were testing, which is Chana Masala, which is like a northern Indian cuisine. And the kids weren't really exposed to those kind of flavors, so they may not have liked it very much, and like, the feedback kind of indicated that, and we could better... We took that feedback, obviously, like, you make judgment calls based off of that. But things like that, that's great information, you know, because like, those kids might not enjoy those types of flavors, or they're not exposed to those kind of flavors. So it's always good to expose them to new things.
Awesome.
Any other comments from board members? Any thoughts, any comments from executive cabinet and what you're hearing?
I just want to thank Sandy Batzema and Sucheta for bringing chef from Brigade. I know that the staff was really looking to grow their skills, and you really honored their professionalism by bringing in that entity. So I just wanted to thank you publicly for that.
Thank you. And last but not least...
Sandy, there's a couple of other comments that wanted to be made.
We haven't finished the last slide yet.
Okay, we'll do the last slide.
So in the upcoming school year, you know, we still have uncertainty around the future federal funding for this program. But based on our financial health, we're very well-equipped and positioned to maintain a high standard that we establish for our healthy school meals. We would like to continue to integrate culinary initiatives into our operations and prioritize professional development for our staff. So even though our grants are ending, there's uncertainty with the budget. But we are committed to continue this high quality and high standard for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Jordan, Assistant Superintendent Rakanose.
Well, I would like to commend really our leadership in student nutrition services because they focus on building the skills of our staff. And the minute they find out that we're going to bring a professional chef in our kitchen, they're super excited because this is one way we can elevate the skills that they need on a daily basis. And the only way we can elevate the quality of food that we serve our students is to elevate the skills that they have or they need to attain that goal. And, you know, we're looking forward to another two years with Chefs Cut. And hopefully, the CDE will provide another rounding of that grant so we can continue this great work that they started doing. So, but I want to thank you, all of you. And I know that our student nutrition staff really have, they wear their hearts on their sleeve because they really love serving our students. So thank you.
Trustee Noah.
Thank you, President Norwood. I really want to highlight your food waste management process. The reason I say that is, from week to week, as you look at all the menu options, there might be a day that, like, certain students might not get enough of a particular item because it becomes very popular, and there might be some leftover from other items. But the following week, you adjust, and you see that. And certain sites get the type of popular foods that students really get attracted to. So along with the professional development, the increase of food quality and the food options, you always put a smile on my face because the graphic says Lunch Hero Squad. Definitely really live by that, and students are very excited and happy and not worried about that food security and willing to come to our campuses to effectively learn and grow. So thank you.
Any comments, trustee John or VP Yipchuan?
I just want to tell you that I am so impressed with, you know, where we were. I remember where we were pre-COVID, and we were...
Pre-Sandy.
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 Pre-Sandy, where we were challenged with, you know, how this has affected general budget. And yet, in these few years that you've been here, you've transformed that model financially into a self-sufficient organization, as well as building your team. And I can tell, you know, just talking to you and members of your team, that your team is so integrated. They know what's going on, and they are proud to be on that team. So I want to just highlight and tell you how impressed I am with your leadership. And I hope you continue to maintain that high standard.
Thank you. Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I am impressed with what you guys have done, and I feel that you guys went above and beyond in, you know, caring for our students and doing the student focus group. I'm just curious, how often do you review the menu and do this student focus group?
So the student focus group is something that we have started to put on a schedule. In the past, we have done it based on what our capacity can do. And some of our student engagement was through, let's say, surveys. Sometimes it's in-person, but it's not consistent because we don't have that manpower. We only have two supervisors and a director, and we do all of the menu planning. We run the daily operation and all of that. So with the contract with Brigade, we're able to build our capacity to consistently provide professional development for our staff to have that regular connection with the students. So we are committed to do, you know, student focus groups four times a year. You know, we'll go to different schools. We'll meet different students. They are definitely not shy, and they're very, very honest about their feedback. And that's very helpful for us to look at ways to improve our service to them. So professional development and student focus is a very intentional initiative that we have in our yearly goal.
I guess one other question is, are like all the elementary school, like, all the foods are the same? Or do you cater to different, like, ethnic groups if there's more in that, like, you know, elementary school?
Currently, our elementary menus are all the same. And we intentionally menued or put on a three-week menu cycle where it provides a variety of different diverse food to accommodate different preferences. Every day, there's two choices, one being the meat and one being the vegetarian. And we are also incorporating more vegan options in our menu because of the growing demand.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
I'll quickly share, just a quick practice. My wife and kids, every week, we look at the school lunch menu to help plan with, like, which of the meat or veggie options that they want so that they know to go get that and not run out because they want to get in line for that.
Yeah, you know, as we hear you talk about the work and just men just added the fact that, you know, when I, when my children were in school, we would look at the menu, and then my wife would know which days that she wasn't going to send them to school with a lunch because the kid said that they wanted that particular lunch. We had to make sure that they had money on their lunch card, just to bring all those years back. But the other piece is that you're talking about a culinary experience now that your team is getting in terms of having a sense of pride. Sandy, you have always instilled a sense of pride in your team, and you always have a smile on your face with the hard work that you're doing to serve all the different communities. I'm excited about personally that our kids are getting exposed to these experiences. And if there's something that they don't like, but they know that the next day is going to be something different, right? Then maybe one day they will, their palate will change over time. And you give them that opportunity for palate development, which is really super powerful. So we're so thankful for you and your team and chef being a part of this. And hopefully, again, you get a chance to continue with us and grow with our community as we develop, one, their sense of their palates, the professional development for the staff in student nutrition, and always continue to keep your funding moving forward. Do we, I know we don't track their grants and those types of things, but we don't...
Actually, yes, and that's something I was going to comment on is...
Actually, yes. Um, and that's something I was going to comment on is uh and building on what President Norwood said about how you elevate. The professionalism of the team. And I remember the first time you did a board report, you introduced a. Different title for our student nutrition. I think it was professionals or specialists.
Oh, I call them dining staff.
Say that again?
Dining staff.
Dining staff, okay, thank you. And that just set the trajectory for a different kind of student nutrition services. And the way that you continue every year to build up all of the team. And it always feels to me like you've only been here a few years, but then when I think about it, I think you're coming up close to 10 years now.
Uh, eight years.
Eight years. And through those eight years, you've really taken on a lot of challenges and. You've uh worked through them and you've elevated the staff with the capacity to work through interpersonal issues that come up that get in the way of the work. And building on the grants, uh, I used to always ask you when the grants came my way, hey, did you see this one? Did you see this one? But now I know you have all of them. And so if I'm tempted to send that, I generally hold back and think, nah, I'm sure she's got this one. So uh, that's because I have confidence and um in the way that you're. Always striving to get those grants and we do have a running record of all of our grants. So I could get that information for the next weekend report. And I just really appreciate that you always put yourself out there to find everything. Like right now, we're using a grant to update the kitchen and. And put in a new refrigerator and you've figured out with the team um how to maximize the dollars that you got from that. Because I think it's just a small grant, like less than a million, isn't it?
Uh, which one?
The one that currently is going to replace the freezer and.
Oh, it's all through the kit fund. So it's within the 1.4 million dollar.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the kind words. Um, I mean, we are very grateful for uh for um for all the support from the district, the board members and executive cabinets. You know, we have a great team overall in the district, you know, uh, all of this work cannot be done without H R, without M L T, without business services. So we. And and I feel very supported by my own team as well. Uh, we're all very highly motivated. I think we all have the same vision. For the department for our to serve our students. So I'm glad that we have that unity. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item uh B I um. Twenty twenty five twenty thirty five M U S D educational roadmap, shaping the future through building a culture of we draft. Superintendent Jordan.
Thank you, President Norwood. Uh, two years ago, the board requested that I create a new 10 year educational master plan. And I'm excited to share the first draft with all of you. And as you can see, it still is a work in progress. And I've titled it the M U S D educational roadmap. Shaping the future through building a culture of we. And since the board requested that I create this, um, over the last two years. I've had conversations with our association's roundtable, with our leaders, with um individual teachers and. Team members as well as our different groups that we meet with, P T A, school site councils. C back, also student leaders. And so this is a compilation of. That uh individual work that I've done in gathering feedback as well as what our L cap advisory group has shared. What our community design team has shared. And then also looking at the L cap survey, which had like 4,028 respondents. And I was able to come through that with the supportive A I to identify the actions that were suggested. Through uh for each of our five strategic goals. And then I went back to my. Notes that I had taken on all my different conversations with different individuals and groups. And then use that to inspire the actions that you'll see on the strategic goals, which I'll point out. And most recently, I revised our strategic goals to be more inclusive of all of our team members. And also given the different conversations in the boardroom and classrooms, uh, just throughout these. Last seven years or eight years since we adopted the strategic goals. And so those have been revised a bit as well. When you look, if you're clicking on this on the board agenda, you may see that there's this little tab over here. You need to open it so that you could see all of the tabs. And this first page. Is the introduction. It essentially captures the why. It links to our history of Milpitas. As the first planned integrated neighborhood at Sunny Hills and uh building on. The generations that we have here in Milpitas and uh several of them were, several of our families were honored at the Juneteenth. Celebration on Saturday. And. That's one of the, I think, unique things about M U S D is that we are a community that is um really. Rested in and nurtured by this deep. Deep habit and life skills of living with people who are different from yourself and. Learning from them and celebrating with each other what makes us uh unique as well as what our cultural histories are. Our ethnicities and then using that as our strength so that as we have newer people coming to live in Milpitas. They too get to be wrapped in our culture of we. And I think that's uh something that is felt even in the city. As what attracts people to Milpitas is they know they're going to be welcome in our city and our community. And that is. Really part of the foundation of our number one strategic goal to build a culture of we and also sets the stage for our 10 year roadmap. And then uh building on the history of air and what those generations of alumni have created. We have established M U S D innovation campus, which is a model or an incubator for the whole district. And how we assure that our learners are going to be the leaders of the global community. And they're going to be the creators of the work ahead and they're not simply going to be consumers. And then, as we look at setting the stage, it references back in 2017 when we had our visioning day. And we had about um almost 80 different people or more than 80 people representing all walks of the M U S D community, including. Some uh community experts and education experts. And together, they. Created 21 different visualizations. And there was a student learner in each one. So 21 different visualizations of what education could be. And since then, we are realizing some of what they envisioned. And we see that in the classrooms where they have project based learning and uh learners are going out into the community and learning from. Others. That was one of the highlights on one of the 21 teams. Also taking advantage of uh nature and bringing it into the classroom and. Taking the classroom into nature. And then also one of the other things that stands out in my memory from that day is. The ability to take technology and use it so that we could have inclusive classrooms and inclusive workspaces. And we see in our inclusion efforts that that is something that we are carrying forward. So that really set the stage for. Uh, where we are today and will continue into the next 10 years. I also capture, and it's important to capture these different. Uh, milestones that we've had in that time. There's a revenue section which really speaks to how M U S D. Is uh beyond the norm in identifying different ways that we can bring in revenue. We heard from Sandy just now about how she has capitalized on the kit grant in order to elevate professional pathways for her team. Which then benefits all of our learners because they have foods that they're attracted to, either because it's something new to them. Or something that they have at home all the time. And then we have our different pathways, which is strategical number three. And we have here illustrated all of the different ways that we have. Worked to establish pathways that are new as well as expanding pathways that existed, like our three academies, Milpitas High School. And then the next section is on engagement. And we have developed our equity. Policy in conjunction with our culture of we equity team, which was created by. As a result of the 2020 all. Team M U S D professional development day where we talked about bias and we made three commitments to identify our own bias. To be a stand up person while we see that somebody else is being harmed. And also to assure that our learners see themselves in what they're reading and writing and listening to. And as a result of that whole team collaboration to. Uh, design that day, we had a follow up online during COVID. And then from there, we had about 32 people who wanted to create this culture of we equity team. And now it's evolved to having a core team of nine to 12. And they helped to guide our professional learning around equity. We've also established different um affinity groups because we recognize that it's important for people to see others. Uh, like them who share some of the similar experiences culturally or historically. In order to thrive in the whole of we and our more most recent affinity group that's been created. Is our A A P D I plus or A plus community for short. And so this is something too that we will continue to build on and assuring that that. We value the individuals in the M U S D team. We value the individuals who are students and we value the individuals who make up the families. Of the students as we are all one ecosystem. Then data and trends is something that I will be adding more into, but the first paragraph just captures the many different accolades that we've had. Uh, including our Golden Bell Award for Project Based Learning at Senate. And more recently, K Q E D Youth Takeover with our Milpitas High School Extension and Raft Educator at Rancho and so many more. And then this captures our uh vision, mission and core values. And also in 2018, we created. With a committee of a little over 20 people and it included students, uh, staff, uh governance team members as well as parents. And we worked with a group called Innovate to look at what uh the future graduates will need. And we considered at that time what the future might look like. And some of that's coming to bear uh as, for example, much more is done online or. Through text messaging and social media. And so we, at that time, talked about how we wanted to assure that our graduates. Still maintain a sense of compassion and connection, while also we're going to be very adaptive in a global world. That's uh. That is not something that's distance, but is something that you can tap into every day online, depending on your work. And then also with travel. So those graduate aims that that committee came up with, while it is what M H S um extension programming is built around. It is, I believe, the graduate aims that we need to incorporate throughout the district. And then our strategic goals have been updated to coincide with the feedback that I got from our M U S D team member survey. We had. I think it was 251 who had responded. And essentially what you see is that it is more explicit about who makes up our culture of we and why do we have a culture of we around. Supporting learner success. It also describes that um our learners, our students and team members. We are all learners and also takes into account that all of our learners need to have pathways, including our M U S C team members. And that we also need to make sure that we are building our skill set for um our team members, whether that be social, emotional. Or career wise. And then number five, when we first created that, we had uh. Passing a parcel tax and a bond measure in mind and we knew that we needed to build some schools and remodel others. But uh, I think we're through that that part has evolved. And now that's been more refined to be about. Creating learner focused strategies that assure that we have healthy learning and working environments. And then we have our governance handbook, which is also a part of shaping our future. And then this uh page talks about the process for developing the plan. And then we um summarize the five strategic goals here and then move into each goal. So here, build a culture of we, which is build a culture of we that engages M U S D partners, families, team members and community in supporting learner success. It defines what a culture of we is and then lists out uh. Different actions to achieve building a culture of we. It speaks to building multi tiered systems of success, tier one. It speaks to assuring that we have um celebrations and different ways that we build in belonging and engagement. That we assure that uh families and learners are very much aware of the different opportunities. And that we look at how we can bolster our systems, systemic strategies to assure that families with second language. Are very much a part of all of our different ways that we invite families in to be a part of governance or. Uh, feedback or just being a part of the academic um and cultural community. And then strategical number two is improve communication systems to assure engagement and collaboration with our M U S D partners and stakeholders in support of all learners. Recently, I've learned that stakeholders might have some negative connotations to it. So uh, we'll come up with a different word for that. That is more inclusive and not exclusive. And then we talk about um the different ways that we assure that we are getting communication out there. And that it should be a two way street as far as communication goes, that we take time also to broadcast all of the opportunities in M U S D. And accomplishments to attract new students to our schools. Because we know that we don't have charter schools, but we do have private school. And so. Communication plan is also built around, how do we market ourselves so that we have. I think I'll pause there.
Questions, comments, board?
Not really a question, but thank you, Superintendent, um, for spending the time to put together the roadmap. Uh, very comprehensive. And captures kind of. What M U S D has been about. And I appreciate the future planning of how M U S D uh will look. Thank you.
VP Yip Chuan or trustee or clerk No, or excuse me, trustee Jung. Any questions, comments at this point?
I also want to thank the um superintendent for the tremendous amount of work that is um that's actually shown here. And it is uh very comprehensive. Um, I have not gone through this in detail, but uh when I do, I I'll offer my comments at that time.
Thank you.
Yeah, same here. Um, thank you for the time that, you know, you um thoughtfully put this together and um, you know, going through it. I I appreciate how much time that you put in and I'm looking forward to the finished product.
Me too.
Yep.
Okay, so strategic goal number three is to design pathways that empower empower every learner, students and team members to explore their passions and pursue future careers. Whether that career is a different um. Position within that pathway or maybe a different uh set of paths within the school district and also even beyond. And we want to assure that we are continuing to develop those partnerships with businesses and institutes of higher education so we can continue with. so we can continue with building out our dual enrollment opportunities, also really being able to create a foundation of apprenticeships and internships. And that's part of the reason why this year I will be doubling down on building out our M L Pitas Alliance Partners for Future-Ready Learners and increasing our membership to twenty corporations and community organizations. Right now, we just have four. Well, not just, but right now we have four. We have the city of M L Pitas, we have K L A and Hussein Realty, as well as... Oh, it sounds like Everine Community College District. Another part of making sure that we have different pathways is that we are looking at not only like the physical part of being in the companies or the company is coming to us. Once Phase Three is completed at the M U S D Innovation Campus, that will be a great place for businesses to come and hold their own types of workshops. And it will be a wonderful place for us to have where our team members can collaborate with business or community leaders to hold convenings and workshops and strategies for upscaling people's work skills. There are other aspects too, as we think about A I and technology. And at our last board meeting, Director Song shared our technology plan, is that A I can also provide ways for learners to explore pathways. There are A I simulators, for example, that students can go through in order to explore what a different career might be. And we also want to make sure that we have Career Exploration Beginning in TK. If you look at the California Content Standards, there are different points throughout a student's lifetime in the classroom where they're exposed to opportunities for career. So it's just a matter of really elevating that and making sure that we capitalize on what some of our different team members are doing so that others can replicate it. For example, in the early years, looking at what is your community around you. And I know that some teachers have brought, because farming is a community around us, they brought cow to the first graders to see what cow is and to talk with a farmer about farming. And then I know others, they bring the police in. So just really trying to make sure that everybody has that opportunity to bring those resources into the classroom. And then recognizing that we have special interests or extracurricular activities that not only are our team members fostering and nurturing, but our students themselves are creating for students who are younger than they are. And also some of the parents and some of the other community members are getting involved. We really want to make sure we capitalize on that as well as an opportunity for building out pathways because we're talking about exposure to what I could be if, if I knew about it. Or along those lines too, is making sure that kids are aware of how they can have a voice and leadership in the community. So that's where we look at building in the state seal of civic engagement, also capitalizing on opportunities in the county like the Santa Clara County Superior Court Law Day. And then the fourth strategic goal is focused services and support systems to ensure all learners are fully engaged while achieving social, emotional, and academic gains. So here we go through, in general, on our California dashboard overall, we have the data that our students, if you look at the whole, are in the high or very high areas, which is green and blue for attendance, reading, math, and career readiness. However, when we disaggregate it, our learners of African ancestry, Latinx ancestry, those students who are experiencing housing insecurity, or students who are from low-income backgrounds, or students who are learning English as a second language, their success on the whole is everywhere from red to orange. So we have a lot of work to do. And that calls for a lot of equity. And it also calls for us to double down on our attendance goal to increase attendance by ninety-seven percent. Because as President Norwood has said several times, and we've learned at different workshops, student has to be in class first in order to be successful. The other piece to making sure that our learners have what they need is that we really need to look at the multi-tiered systems of success and make that more explicit in our work and integrate along with that inclusion strategy so that inclusion isn't seen as a one-off. I know from several of our team members who are in the classroom that they really want to do inclusion, but they don't necessarily feel like they have the skills. So we need to think about how do we integrate those skill development with the other things that we're already doing, like with the science of reading or with math talk or with preschool through third grade initiatives. We have to layer on all of those things so that we can really build the capacity of our team members. And one of the first things we need to do in building the capacity of our team members is assuring that they continue to have professional development, but also they have opportunities to invest in their own well-being. And so continuing to contract with partners as we have with CareSalus and Optum Health so that our, our team members have the opportunity to consult with somebody if they need to. And we had the colleague-to-colleague was really robust before COVID nineteen or before COVID in nineteen and twenty twenty. But it hasn't really been as active now. So it's a thing that I want to make sure that we are investing in because it can provide an asynchronous professional development library for all of our team members as well as live. And then continuing also to make sure that our team members are being exposed to and given opportunities to learn about technology and A I that can benefit them in their work and also benefit our learners. And assuring that we are looking at ways that we can also accelerate and delve deeper into the content area for Pathways Career. It does dovetail with Strategical Number Three. And then looking also at the whole learner. We talk a lot about mental health and social, emotional learning. And sometimes I've heard people wonder, well, how does that really impact what a learner does? Yes, we know that it does help to set the learner up for academic success. But if you want to translate social, emotional learning into work skills, it's those soft skills that workers, that employers are looking for. That if you read reports like the World Economic Forum for the skills that people need in twenty thirty, it's those things that we're teaching our learners when we say social, emotional learning. We're teaching them how to, how to work through challenges, how to resolve conflict, how to collaborate. That's all also skills for the workforce. Then we go into Strategical Number Five, which is to develop creative learner-focused strategies to ensure healthy learning and working environments. This is where we really need to expand those partnerships with corporations, local businesses, governance, et cetera. And we have already set up the framework for that with the M U S D Alliance Partners for Future-Ready Learners. And as I said a moment ago, I really want to invest more of the time this coming year to build that out. I know that another school district, Santa Clara Unified, has somebody who's dedicated to doing this. And it's brought in many opportunities for learners. For example, they have the Forty-Niner Football.
Forty-Niner Foundation.
Thank you, Forty-Niner Football Foundation. And that's afforded their learners the opportunity to have job skill types of experiences where they're actually going and having internships during the summer. And then it also provides learner, excuse me, our team members in the classroom with some of the resources that they need if they have, like, we have M L Pitas Community Ed Foundation who does the five thousand dollar grant for our team members who want to invest in something different for the kids in the classroom. But this would be where we're able to like multiply that fifty times. So really developing that is something that's going to benefit our learners through the future. And then also anchoring our M L Pitas Adult Education as a model for career development within M L Pitas, which is the eastern gateway to Silicon Valley. And some of the things that I've indicated here for action items for M L Pitas Adult Ed is we've talked about the annual career fair that they lead that. Also that they continue to, or that they collaborate with different organizations and businesses so that they can provide workers with skills so that those businesses look to M L Pitas as, oh, that's that organization where I can go get my, my people who are on the floor, who are second language learners, they need more skills, I can go there because I know that they're going to have it, or I can have them, I can contract with them to come to us. And then we've been a part of the South Bay Consortium for Adult Education since twenty twelve thirteen, when the funding for Adult Ed changed. And I know that we attend those. And I know that it's created partnerships where adult learners, maybe at M L Pitas High School, they want to learn something that M L Pitas, excuse me, M L Pitas Adult Ed doesn't provide. So then they transition over to Santa Clara and vice versa. But I think that that is something that we can look to as, what is it really doing for M U S D besides just doing, being the facilitator of our funding and making sure that we're complying with all of the state goals and reports? What is it doing for us? How is it connecting us with these other partnerships? So dedicating some more time into supporting our M L Pitas Adult Ed Principal and Coordinator will go a long way in that area as well. I'll pause for a moment.
Just a minor note, I believe the foundation offers twenty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, ten thousand dollars for the annual grant.
Thanks.
I would add to the development of the document. For each of the strategic goals, first of all, you've done a tremendous amount of work compiling all of this and showing us where we've been historically in areas that need to be further development because it does tell a story of M U S D and how hard everyone is working to serve the students in the district. I'm curious, when it comes to each of the strategic goals, like, how will schools and departments build a culture of we? How will school sites set up a framework? Or what is the framework for school sites on improving communications? How does H R, like strategic goal number three, how does H R seeing how we can build pathways for staff members in partnership with school sites? So the educational roadmap focuses significantly on how we serve students. But when you wrap it around the all learners, we're also have the staff or the employees of the district and where is their narrative? And you may say that their narrative doesn't fit in this component of it. But there is a section, and I do want to highlight the fact that you did call out in strategic goal number four, several areas of support of, as it related to staff members. So as I started to write this one down, you started to talk about CareSalus and all those other things as well. But there is something, because there's, there's, in order to execute all of these things, you have to have people super excited and they need to be taken care of in a way that is very thoughtful so they know the work that's being put in to support them in the execution of all this hard work. So I'm not sure if that is a part of the educational roadmap.
That's actually number one underneath Strategical Number Four. So it's this whole section here. And we could definitely add to that.
Okay, so strategic goal number four, that section is going to address, for example, how schools and departments build their cultures. I think you mentioned the Culture We Equity Team as a part of that. And then how school sites improve communications, like how to make sure, like, for example, we had, we have a number of letters from parents from Randall today. We had a parent come to speak to us from Randall about concern with the school. But you did put out a message in Parent Square, and it may not be that all, they may have gotten that message or they may not have gotten that message. All right, so how are the school sites as a part of the roadmap? And again, it may not be appropriate in terms of how this lays out, but I just think about the engine behind the execution of this and where does it see itself being supported besides being responsible for the execution?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And that brings us down to the operational plans. And we have our tech plan, recruiting, and retention plan. Assistant Superintendent James drafted the talent recruitment plan here. That, that actually should have its own little ten-minute report later in the fall.
Okay. Yep, because Jonathan used to do that as well. Or Assistant Superintendent Brunson.
Yep, I think this, this one is very impressive. Assistant Soup James has put in a lot of work into making sure that it touches all of the different aspects of the strategic goals. And it also hits some of what you're talking about with making sure that we're building up our team members.
Awesome, thank you for that.
Now we have our facilities plan. The facilities plan here is the twenty twelve one. And we, Chief Business Officer Rakanose is working to get a request for proposals together so that we can have a new one updated November twenty twenty-five. Not sure that will do on quite as extensive as this one. This one is seven hundred and fifty pages. It goes through every single school and identifies facilities needs. And it was used for the twenty twelve bond as well as the twenty eighteen bond in identifying safety, security issues, and also modernization needs.
Just a question, question on that?
Sure.
So did we take this initial plan that was done, this huge plan? Did we mark off the things that we accomplished? Was that used for as a method of running, kind of a run-in list of what's left to do or?
I'm not sure that would be before I was in the seat and before Dorothy was in hers. Do you know if there's reference about that?
Well, I would start out by saying the twenty eighteen, the list that was compiled for the bond in twenty eighteen, before we got into any of the buildings of the projects, focused on a number of items from the facility of this particular plan, and particularly accessibility on the campuses, the roofs, the HVAC, a number of things.
The pavement, all of the safety and security.
All the safety and security things, because that was one of the things that we ran on. The fencing around the school districts, which was added. So there were a number of things from the facilities plan, but over time it evolved. And then COVID happened and there wasn't the ability to do some things during COVID as well that got incorporated from the facilities master plan. But I would also say we haven't had a report on, here's a checkoff of that, of the things that may need to move forward. So that may be a suggestion before we move forward into getting another facilities master plan redone. We have folks go through the one from twenty twelve. We check off those things and then look at the things that may be remaining. And they may not be warranted anymore for one reason or another. And then that forms the baseline, are these the things that we still need to do and what needs to be added on top of that?
I would like to add that.
What was that coming from? That's from the speaker right there.
I don't know why it sounded like that. I would like to add that we keep track of all the capital improvements that we've been doing on a yearly basis. And those are the informations that we will provide whichever organization we go with to do the facility master planning for, for the upcoming one. And we will provide them our latest one also so they could take a look at it and so they can update what has been done since then and then make sure that they call it out in the reports. And then things that we fixed already and had worked on it, it will be considered as, you know, part. things that we fixed already and had worked on it, it will be considered as, you know, part of the checklist. And then they may identify more new things that may have occurred since then. So it will be a comprehensive report just like this one. And it will be all throughout the entire district, so meaning they will visit all of our schools.
Yep.
And thank you for that reminder. If we look at the community bond oversight committee documents, it has lists of everything that was done. Also added to, to be added to this page are these other plans, injury and illness prevention plan. We won't add all of the school safety plans or our intruder drill plans because those are confidential, but we have a public safety plan that we'll add. And then this page includes our achievement plans, and the LCAP is really the umbrella for many other plans. So those are spelled out here as well with the links to them. The comprehensive school improvement plan is Cal Hills. And the reason that they have CSI is because of not having enough students matriculate either as graduates or onto a trade school. And so that's one of the aspects, and that brings the school team. I know it's triple digits, I think it's like $150,000, which they've been using to develop their project-based learning, and we saw their showcase of that earlier this year. The differentiated assistance plan is, we've been in that now for the third year, I think it is, and that has, the last time, do you recall, Executive Director, what it was for last year that we moved out of? Was it chronic absenteeism?
Yes, Superintendent Jordan, it was for students with disabilities.
Who are chronically absent?
Yes, but no longer. We moved out of there.
Thank you. And so now for the new year, what are we in it for?
We're working on the plan right now, and we will be focused on our English learners for the coming year.
Thank you. And then the comprehensive coordinated early intervening services, this will be our fourth year in that. And in general, it is because we are significantly disproportionate in identifying students of African ancestry, Latinx, also foster, foster youth for special ed services. And it breaks it down into specific types of services such as other health impaired or specific learning disorders. In the very first year, we were, one of the groups that we were in it for was other health impairments, but that isn't what we are in it for now. And you see the addendum here, and being in CC, CCAS requires that each year the district does an analysis to get to what are the root causes of the over-identification. And it focuses on those schools at the elementary level that were called out by the state. And then those team members are going through different professional development aspects. And you speak to that.
Sure. We're also looking at our MTSS structures and our student study team processes to look at what are we doing in that pre-intervention and intervention stages that prevent us from over-identification of students with disabilities. And so we're, in our root cause analysis, we're going back in time all the way back to looking, Trustee Jung, back to looking at our preschoolers and their prior to district experience and whether they actually had preschool experience become, before coming to the district. So our focus is really looking at that pre-intervention stage moving forward.
Thank you. And then at the bottom is the MUSD SIPS, those all align with LCAP. LCAP lines with our strategic goals. And the SIPS, if you click onto that link, it's on our webpage. And if you're ever curious about the details of the data that the schools are using to determine student outcomes, it's in there. And then the acknowledgements page will be completed at the end. So the next steps are, between now and September 9th, I'll have several representatives of different members of our MUSD team take a look at it and make comments similar to what you did. And then we'll make revisions, and I'll bring it to the board in a finalized version on September 9th for adoption.
Any additional questions or comments?
Not for the draft, but Superintendent Jordan, I think when you get closer to finalization, an overlay over, over the board policies and administrative regulations to make sure like it coordinates whatever you have in the roadmap, the existing policy, language should be updated accordingly to match.
Okay.
And then I would add, if you have a peer group of superintendents, if, once you concluded and asked them, or had, you know, got them together and talked about it and saying, if you came into a district and this is what the superintendent shared with you, or the board shared with you in terms of something with, how, what do you, would this be helpful in terms of moving things forward?
Sure.
Thank you. It said we will receive the superintendent's report BI, and we'll move to BII. Are there any comments? Definitely want to give, before I move on. Scott, are there any public comments?
Oh, we have no public comment at this time.
Are there any comments from the executive cabinet? Thank you for your participation in this great work. I hope you guys recognize the amazing work that, we recognize the amazing work that the district is doing, and the way that Superintendent Jordan is attempting to capture this work to build on to the future is very, very important to the district and the community as a whole. So thank you all for your efforts. Moving to item BII, quarterly report, Williams settlement compliance.
Thank you. So the Williams quarterly report is our quarterly report that we need to do to indicate to the board if there have been any complaints pursuant to the Williams law, and there have not. And those complaints would encompass teachers teaching out of credential, not having the textbooks that, or curriculum resources that enough for every learner, and also classrooms that are in disrepair or unsafe.
Awesome, thank you. Moving on to item 20, action items. Scott, is there, is there a video for the adopted resolution 2025.53 to approve the education protection account?
There is not.
So item AI, business services, is there a motion to adopt resolution 2025.53?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item, item AII, approved surrenderance change orders number eight through 11 from the MHS Performing Arts Center. Is there a motion?
That was, we had a study session earlier.
I, I know we have a study session.
So if you're looking for, so what we can do, what we can do is we can motion and second. Or if you're asking for additional information before we take the motion or second, then we can turn it over to staff, the executive cabinet, and then they can share with us what it is. If that's your request?
Yep.
Okay. So we have a request before we move forward to make the motion.
Chief Business Officer Rakanose, could you please review what the change orders are? So that the board knows what they're taking, what we're asking them. Mr. Forsner, can you put that item up on the screen, please?
Thank you.
So number one, change order number eight includes a total of 254, 254,000 for, as the hard costs. And this project will be 80% included, uh, completed, I'm sorry, and and this is for I apologize. I got caught off guard. Hang on one second.
Well, so while you're looking at it, usually when we have an action item and it comes to the agenda, we have the, we provide the opportunity for cabinet to prepare, and part of that today was having the group here to prepare. So if we want to move to the next item and come back while the superintendent, while the assistant superintendent prepares for that, will that work?
Yes.
Okay, so moving to while you prepare, we're moving to action item AII, conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution 2025.56, interfund borrowing for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Now open the public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? The public hearing is closed. Now is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. We asked, are you prepared? You ready?
Uh, yes. Scott, may I ask a favor if you could go and
Of course.
Put up in, on the screen, the list of change order in our board agenda. And maybe the board can pinpoint the question on the change order, please?
So as a point of order, we can, we can have a motion and a second to adopt, approve the change order eight through 11, or we could have an amended motion. We can have an amended motion. I can make a recommendation for amended motion to adopt change orders eight, nine, and 11, or only one of them, or whatever that might be. We would have further communication with the superintendent on the reasons why, or the concerns before it needed to be addressed before it was brought back to the board.
Right, interesting. I really just have one question, and I just see, I found where I was looking for. And that is in regard to change order number eight. There's a statement that says the project is currently 80% complete. I'm confused as to meaning, does that mean change order eight? Is 80% complete, or is the overall building 80% complete? What does that mean?
I see we have Mr. Kirk online, but CBO Rakanose, do you want to start?
Yeah, so change order number eight means this is the eighth times that we submitted the change order. And but 80% of the project is completed, meaning that the surrender is working on the project for the Melpetus Performing Arts Center. We are 80% close to completion of the project.
Of the entire project.
Of the entire project, yes.
Either as 80% complete.
Yes.
Thank you. But then I'm good with the rest of it. That was my only point of confusion.
Oh, okay.
What does that mean? What is 80%?
Thank you. Okay.
So this is an action item, so we now have the additional information. Scott, are there any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
So with that said, is there a motion to approve surrenderance change orders numbers eight through 11 for the MHS Performing Arts Center? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have.
You have three ayes.
We have three ayes.
Waiting for the next one.
Motion to approve, any abstaining? We know.
No.
We have three to one on this action item. Motion carries. Thank you, Trustee No. Item A4, adopt the district 2025, 2026 proposed budget. Are there any questions before we take a make a motion? Scott, are there any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
We have a motion to adopt the 2025, 2026 proposed budget.
Make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. B, learning and development, BI, formal adoption of the 2025, 2026 local control accountability plan, annual update. Are there any questions for staff before we make a motion?
I would like to point out, ask Executive Director Dervinus to point out the one thing that's been added.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. Yes, we wanted to bring to attention that since this board study session, some items were added with regards to inclusion, specifically actions 1.10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, which actually dive a little bit deeper into the work that we're going to do around professional development for all of our team members, our administrators, our general education, and our special education staff members around inclusive practices, including co-teaching, as well as also leveraging our teachers on special assignment, or TOSSs to support individual coaching and mentoring for those who have students with, who are being included in a less restrictive environment. So those additions have been added since we did do the study session based on board feedback and other feedback. So we just wanted to be transparent about that and let everybody know.
Thank you for that.
Yes. So Mary Jude, in those changes, did that affect the budget at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a
Move to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none? Motion carries. Human relations, item CI, adopt resolution 2025.48 provisional intern permit. SDC, ESN, K through first grade request. Scott, are there any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Is there any requests for clarification by the board to the executive cabinet? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item DI, approve the superintendent's office, approve management, Milpitas Management Association's salary schedules with adjustments to the number of days for certificate managers. Is there any additional questions from staff or any staff comments that would like to be made on this particular item?
I just want to make sure that the board's aware that this means that there is no compensation increase for managers. However, they will have a three-day sabbatical, meaning that their work year is three days less, but the salaries stays the same and no salary increases.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Motion carries. Item DII, approval of the superintendent's contract. This is a board president. This item is the board's discussion and possible approval of the eighth amendment of the superintendent's employment agreement. California
You should have it up. Scott, would you please put that amendment up on the screen? Thank you. Thank you.
The amendment on the script, so read this first. This item is the board's discussion and possible approval of the eighth amendment to the superintendent's employment agreement. California Government Code Section 54953 requires a verbal summary of the proposed compensation and fringe benefits be given to the public prior to the final board action on the local executive appointment agreement. Based on the board's satisfactory evaluation of the superintendent, the board wishes to implement an extension to the term of the superintendent's agreement by one year. Accordingly, the proposed eighth amendment to the superintendent's employment agreement would extend the superintendent's contract by one year more than the current term running through June 13th, 2028. The superintendent's compensation and benefits will remain unchanged. A copy of the eighth amendment is posted with the agenda for this meeting. And what we have on the screen is the eighth amendment to the superintendent's contract for 2025, 2026 school year. Scott, are there any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Can you slide down to page two? Thank you. Nope. Good, thank you.
Awesome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Motion carries. Congratulations, Superintendent Jordan.
Thank you.
Item 21, consent item. Consent item that is considered routine will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless the members of the board staff or public request that that specific item be tabled or removed or discussion or correction. Are there any items to be tabled or removed for discussion or correction? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent item agenda?
Move to approve the consent items.
We have a motion to approve the consent item agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Dates of future board meetings. August 26th, tentative study session, five P M. Tensive close session, six P M. Open session, seven P M. September 9th, tentative study session, five P M. Tensive close session, six P M. Open session, seven P M. And this is where we will be coming back to school. But as always, there may be a need, just in case there is a need, we will call special board meetings or study sessions as appropriate during the summertime as deemed warranted, either for in-person or Zoom applicable. Any additional announcements or reminders from the board?
I have one.
Yes.
For those who are interested, we are, or I'm actually hosting an eighth grader from Russell to do a class, which we're calling AI for Seniors, where we will teach our senior community, the kids.
So who was, you said eyes. Are you doing this as a board member?
No, I'm not doing this as a board member. As, as part of my last thing that I did for MCF.
So you're making the announcement that MCF is hosting
In a class for seniors on AI.
Okay, so MCF, you're making the announcement that MCF is hosting a class for seniors, for seniors on AI.
Yep.
When is the class?
Next week, Monday at, it's an eight-session class. It starts on Monday from one to two at the Terris, what are the, Terris Gardens in Milpitas.
Awesome. Are there any other announcements from board members or community related or otherwise?
Well, I just want to thank the, the board for closing out the 2024, 2025 school year. Appreciate all your dedication. Executive Cabinet, thank you for your dedication and time. Looking forward to the next school year.
Thank you. VP Yipchuan.
Yes, you know, thank you so much, the executive cabinet and all of our staff and you know, we had an amazing year. And I hope that you will use the summer to get some rest, to travel, to rejuvenate and we look forward to having you back in the fall.
Thank you, VP Yipchuan. My, my parting comments for the school year is that there are a lot of new experiences this, this school year in terms of concerns about what's happening at the federal level. And I really appreciate our response to ensuring that our community was aware of the support that we had for our students in the school district, as well as the families of the employees and our partnership with the city to make sure that our learners were as safe as they could possibly be. Appreciate the constant updates in terms of where we were hearing things on social media and the news about the possible effect to funding sources that our assistant superintendent of chief business officer was thoughtful of those things, being able to talk about when that impact would be, as well as the superintendent giving us timely updates on federal and state legislature in terms of some responses. This, this, this year has been, again, a new year of learning for all of us. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the Milpitas Unified School District along with my colleagues and as well as the executive, as the executive cabinet and with the board communication specialist Scott, who does a tremendous job of making sure that all the great work that's happening in the Milpitas Unified School District at all the different sites and things like that is out in the community. So while there is other noise that, that happens and sometimes that noise is necessary, but it should never overtake the great work that's happening in the classrooms, in student nutrition, on the grounds, with the volunteers, with the PTAs, with the work that the teachers and the administrators and the executive cabinet and superintendent all putting together. So we tremendously thank you for all of your effort. And as Kelly said, we hope that you get, you know, I kind of hope that. I mean, I don't really rest a lot, so so I'm like, what Kelly talking about? They need to work. But anyway. But I do get, hope you get the chance to rejuvenate and come back strong because you, you see the educational, the educational roadmap that you are, hopefully you see yourselves contributing to that and in a, in a very, very deep way because it's going to carry this district for many, many years to come. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a, we have a harmonious choir motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seeing none? Motion carry. This meeting is adjourned.